... selectmen's meeting. Chris Mitchell is out of town on business and I guess I'll run the show for today.
I'll go over the agenda. At 7 o'clock, we have citizens input. At 7:05, we have Paige Duncan and deputy chief Tom Buckley going to discuss the grant for Foxborough Hazard Mitigation Plan update. 7:20, Roger Hill on the intermunicipal sewer agreement with the Town of Sharon. 7:35, settlement agreement with NPS LLC in regards to the Optum Field Lounge. 7:50, we're going to have a discussion with the Napontet Reservoir NRRC update in discussion. 8:10, selectmen's update. 8:15, town managers update. 8:20, assistant town managers update. And just a couple of action items when we're done with that. So Barry Beth, why don't you lead us?
I would be happy to.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alrighty. Anybody here for citizens input?
Yes.
Come on up and state your name and where you live.
My name is Mike Keller.
No, sit.
I'm on Pitts and Ray Allen Street. I was wondering why we can't get drainage on that street from the town garage up to Belcher Street or the ledge apartments.
What do you mean? We really can't interact. Can you interact?
Yeah, so I'd be happy to discuss it with you, sir. I talked with all the public works, not sure.
I went down there and they told me it's too expensive.
Okay.
And then they went out and bought a new loader. So I'm just curious as to why they can't do anything about the drainage. I have a CD here if you want to look at it.
Well, if you want, I'd be happy to meet with you privately, you know, during a regular course of a day to go over it with you. I'll even work with the Public Works Department to direct the beer at the meeting with you, with us.
No, you're the town manager. You were the town manager two years ago, right?
Yep.
Now, I went to your office when you were at the other old building, right? And you were the first officer when you walked in on the right? And I asked, I asked the lady in there to get ahold of me on what they're doing to the next door to my house. The old dump where they filled it, now it's called the boneyard.
Yep.
Okay. I asked them what that was all about. Well, I got a note, letter from you guys tells me that that was just to put electrical stuff right here, right, if you want to see it.
Yeah, okay.
And I went to your office twice and they said that you were going to call me and nobody called me twice.
Yep. Okay, thanks. See, this came from, this actually came from the board. It actually came from the planning board.
Well, that, whatever it is, that's what, all is, all I'm saying is they didn't put anything there. They filled it up with recycled and they're using it for a dump again and now they got trucks parked in there.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to discuss it with you, sir, but I, I'm not in a position to do it tonight, but, but I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to set up a time with you if you want. You can, I can, I can, I'll give you my card, you can call me tomorrow and we'll be having a set up time.
Yeah, okay. Okay, alright.
Just, yeah, just, Mr. Calhoun, just a question, just so, because it is public, citizens input. You want public drainage on the road because it's flooding your property or it's flooding the road?
I put a flood in the lawn and they've destroyed my lawn. All the water's bouncing off my car. I have videos of 20 feet of it shooting 20 feet water into the yards. I would like to leave it with you guys so you can go look at it and...
Sure. Absolutely, okay.
Is it after a rainstorm?
Always when it rains.
No, that's what I mean. Is it after rain when it, or is there some other issue?
No, they usually bounce in the snow off. It hits my cars. I mentioned in the driveway, it's 18 feet. And then where you'll see the sand coming from the ledge apartments all the way down the street. And I got, I even got it where they threw the snow up on my front lawn with their new snow thrower, all right? That's 20, 30 feet away. But I got a mound as high as this table going down, right down the center of my front lawn. And I just put a brand new lawn in, it's all destroyed. They ruined it. So I just want to know why we can't have drainage on that street. I've been there 38 years. I asked for a speed limit sign on that street, right? And I went down to the town garage guy and I says, you know, I says, can we get a speed limit sign on the street? He said, well, these things take time. Twenty-five years ago, I asked him for a speed limit sign. Well, the very next morning, there was a speed limit sign up there, okay? Now, instead of putting it at the railroad tracks where everybody slows down and can actually see the speed limit sign, they put it up on the corner where they're already doing 50 when they hit the corner, all right? And why don't they move it down? And there's no speed limit sign going from the Ledge Hill Apartments down towards the town garage, but there's two on this side way in the woods, okay? I can't get them to change the sign. It took me 25 years to get them to put up a sign. So what do we, how do we go about changing the sign? Putting one on each end? How do we do that? And we're going to move this guy?
Yep. Be happy to take a look at it for you. This is, these are two notices, hearings that occurred two years ago for...
What, yes, correct.
Two different things.
And what were they?
One was, one was for a pole location, the other one was for a site plan review.
And what was the, what was the dump that they put in next door for?
That was the site plan review process.
For what?
It was for the use for storage area. And it wasn't proved.
Why are they parking trucks there?
They were trucks parked there temporarily, as I understand it.
There's been trucks parked there temporarily ever since they started it.
For, for national grid, national grid, I believe, used it temporarily.
I don't know who these people are.
Okay.
I can tell you who they are.
Yep. So I'll be happy to take it up with you tomorrow if, I'll be happy to cover the whole thing with you tomorrow, okay?
How do you get ahold of you?
Be happy to leave my card and we'll be happy to set up a time. Not a problem. There you go. Okay? Thank you.
Alrighty, anybody else for citizens input? Alright, Paige, chief, deputy chief.
We need to discuss with you so you can look at it so you don't want to talk to them.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just missed it.
So we are here tonight because Roger Hadfield, kind of, he got us to apply, or me to apply for this grant over a year ago. And now suddenly it's coming in and we got the grant, which is great news, and he's hitting the road. So we have deputy chief Buckley here who has risen to the challenge and I guess we're working together on this one. So just to give a few highlights, we did apply for a grant over a year ago for a hazard mitigation plan. Do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Yeah, so the, the hazard mitigation plan, so back in 2007 was the first plan was done. That was after the Taunton Dam incident, remember when the dam almost collapsed? And after that period, the, I believe the state came up and made every community in the Commonwealth to come up with a plan for all their dams. So at that point, the town of Foxborough created this plan of every dam, every dam was mapped and every, you know, downstream, any flooding or anything like that. 2010, there was a mitigation plan was updated with an, you know, updated facts and things like that. It wasn't just strictly for the dams, it was more infrastructure issues. And if you lost a town building or a roadway or something like that, how would you manage that? So now moving into 2018, as Paige said, we're moving towards, we did get the grant to update it. So now what are we going to look at? Well, we just have to look at the storms that we've had over the last X amount of years with these snow loads and losing power lines and where are we going to put those in the community who don't have the means to keep warm or food and things like that? So this plan will be more geared towards those type of, basically, you know, the changing in the climate and the weather patterns as they, as they're going on in the world so it impacts Foxborough. So that's what this plan will be used for. One of the things that we found out after the fact is, is that there's a initiative that's called the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. And with this grant, we could actually be, get a status change for the town. So we'd get, work on this grant, then we'd go for MVP status. And what that allows you to do is if you have MVP status, you're eligible for more grants from FEMA and different entities like that. You're looked more favorably because you've gone through the effort to create a plan and you're not just going for a grant just to take the money and run with it. So one of the communities that just recently got an MVP was Sudbury, so they were able to go through the process. But to get there, we have to start with this one here. So that's where, you know, why we're sitting here today. So there is a match with this grant. So the match is actually $4,875, that would be the town share, and the total grant is $14,625. What that allows us to do is hire a vendor who has been vetted by the Commonwealth to actually help us create this plan. So wouldn't, it's not just Paige and I and some other volunteers in the community, we actually have professionals that would help us write this grant moving forward. So we are sitting here today that, and unfortunately, we're at, we're in a time crunch, but we need to ask your permission to support this and hopefully have a funding source for the town share of the, the program.
Questions?
Yeah, a couple. So the first one, thank you for coming. First one was done in 2007 and then updated in 2010.
Yes.
So I'm looking through the 2010 report and completely new board of selectmen. Everybody that was in this initial plan, Caspera and Resnick, they're all gone. What was the use of this plan from 2010 to now? So if we're going to invest in another plan, what benefit does a town get other than it's done, we got a grant, it's on a shelf? Have we used this? Have we referenced back to it?
That is a question. We don't really have those answers and we knew that that was going to come up. You know, Paige and I weren't, I was not involved in those two, last two plans. 2007 was. I was involved with some of the data, data gathering aspects of it. But moving forward, you look at the back of that plan and there are some issues that they looked at for mitigation.
Yep.
Honestly, I don't know what was actually done. What I can tell you is that Paige and I are here with you today. We're not going anywhere anytime soon and the team that we're going to be building to move forward with this, you know, we're going to get the, the people that, who could really share their knowledge and move it forward in a, in a more productive way.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing.
No, you're not. And I can't...
But I look at the people that were on this one, Caspera, they were here for the long run. I just hate investing money on something that we got a grant, so we're going to do it and it's cost $5,000.
I think it would allow us...
I think we've actually done, yeah, I just saw that. Because that's why we looked at all of them. I remember over a year ago, I did have an update on this. Now I can't really remember what we did. So Roger said he'd speak to the dams anyway, because I think progress has been made.
Yeah. We actually... Roger, I'm sorry.
He will come to the table to speak.
We've actually been working on doing a, a major dam improvement to the West Street Dam. And we used this money initially to do some work to extend, move the guardrail and provide a wider pavement base there today. And also, I went and got another $148,000 grant that we're using now to fund the study. And what we, what we plan to do is to breach that dam, won't change the water level in the upstream pond, but we're going to replace the culvert that goes under the road with a, a culvert that allows threatened and endangered species to pass through it. And that's a big deal today. And we get quite a bit of money, we'll probably get enough money to do the whole dam repair. And that's, that's what primarily we use the money for that. We also used a bit on the Bleachery Pond east side. And it's not complete, but that dam is partially breached now, so we don't have the hazards that we had in those two areas before.
But, so I get that, but how does that relate to the hazard mitigation plan that was done? And when you say and you got money for it, was it because of the effort?
Yeah, because, because it was on the, on the hazard mitigation list.
Okay.
And we, we got some money out of that, too. They did some base studies with the money that was available. And then that led, led me to file for the, the new grant that we're using now to do the heavy engineering work and then later on, we'll be going for construction.
So the dam you're talking about is Carpenter Pond Dam?
No, West Street.
West Street?
We also, we're doing some work on Carpenter Pond now, but Carpenter needs a study. It's not, it doesn't have a full study.
That's listed in the 2010 report as well.
Yeah. Well, what happened, I guess some time ago, they had a breach down there and it's been repaired, but the dam's still not up to standards. And we need to do a better study and there's some new software out now that's fabulous for this. And our consultant is using it. So when I get to that point, I will have him make a demonstration to the board on what we need to do. And we, we may be able to get some grants there, too.
There was one dam we were under DEP demand.
Two.
There was two?
Yeah.
Are we working to clear those demands?
Yeah, that's West Street and the Bleachery.
And you're using the mitigation funding?
Yes, some of the mitigation funding. I really want to breach that, that east pond on Bleachery. And I really don't want to get into the west pond because the slukesway does not belong to the town of Foxborough. It belongs to the heirs of the people who had the Bleachery. And actually, the run goes right under the building. And they, they wanted to sell it to the town and I said, I don't want to buy it because there's hazardous waste in there, so.
But basically, Jim, just to, so as you know, every community or all around the country, actually, we're dealing with more and more obvious need to demand with, to deal with hazards. So it's getting more competitive. So as, as evidenced, so this is the federal program, the FEMA sponsored funding, the MVP that Tom mentioned, that's the state one. And basically, it's you have to have sort of your ducks in a row to be competitive. Nowadays, they're basically making communities, you know, pre-screen and do this planning exercises to be eligible for any future mitigation and repairs. So we, we as professionals just feel that it's, it's responsible for us to be ready. You know, the town, the state and the feds do realize that this is becoming an issue and they're trying to address it with, through funding, but they're also making it so that you're, you know, they actually pre-qualify you. So that's why we feel it's important to identify these risks. And to go a little further, I mean, it's not just dams and, I mean, we're talking about even over at, I had a list here, you know, extended duration power outages, public water supply contamination issues, inadequate infrastructure, for example, over the fueling station in the garage over at DPW, those are critical. And, you know, if anything were to happen to them over there, it would really, it could handicap the community. So it's looking at all those, looking at snow loads on existing town buildings, the dams are the obvious ones, and emergency outreach. We noted that we don't have a means right now really doing E911. I know there was something through Norfolk County, but that service isn't being provided. So that was another one we were saying is, you know, some of these things that we're noticing more and more, we need, so this will make us eligible as we said.
Yeah, so that's the reverse 911 aspect of it is, you know, I think back in 2007, again, it all came out of the dams and that's what everybody was talking about. And then it morphed a little bit into 2010 with some natural. But today, they're, they're really getting into the, the weather aspect and, and those things that are impacting the community again. You know, being in town my whole life, you know, I have not seen the devastation that we've had just by trees falling and knocking out five different poles on Mill Street. You know, it has nothing to do with the electrical company, that was a private, tree on a private property right past St. Augustine's that just, you know, it's just, those are the things that we have to look at and how are we going to mitigate those? And I think moving forward with, with professionals that can guide us and lead us to that, I think is, is very beneficial to the community as a whole.
And that's one thing I'll say as my PSA, I've been telling this to friends and family is, it just sounds kind of soapboxy, but it's like, these weather issues are going to continue to occur. And right now, it's planning for resiliency as opposed to just pretending it's not going to happen. So, you know, I was telling my relatives, I'm like, get a generator. I mean, we are going to need it. And same with the downtown and these areas. I know during the extended power outages last year, there was concern because, you know, very few businesses had restaurants to provide any services. I think, you know, one of the restaurants in town did and everybody was flocking to it. So it's even that type of thing of as a community, how do we deal with these extended power outages? Are there ways as a community to come together? So it really is taking a hard look sort of at resiliency, because I just keep telling folks, we've got to prepare for it. It's going to happen. And now it's a matter of making sure we all have our ducks in a row so that when it does happen, we're not as impacted.
So, Leah?
No.
Anything else? So, I mean, just to, so I got it straight in my head. We're looking to apply for the grant.
We did get it.
We got the grant.
Yes, you have to.
But we need to improve the $4,000.
Well, no, I have the funding in my thing. It's really just a formality for you guys to accept it so that Bill can execute the contracts. They send us all sorts of contracts and we don't want to sign anything until obviously the, the board accepts it.
So we're accepting the grant?
You're accepting the grant.
You already have a funding to match it?
Yes. Well, I was hoping these guys would do it, but...
We don't have any money.
So...
Okay, okay.
Shucks. We did...
And then with that funding, you're going to be able to hire a consultant to help you come up with the 2018, facilitate the 2018 mitigation plan.
2020, really. It's going to take a couple of years, believe it or not.
Oh, okay, okay.
Which includes the power pieces that have been hotbeded. They'll look at all that, too.
Yes. Oh, okay.
I see a question through the chair related to a topic that's coming up later, but since you're here, I'll ask you now. If you look at the 2010 plan and you look at the existing dam mitigation prevention measures, it lists a whole bunch of dams that we're, have control of, it does not mention a Napontet Reservoir dam. And I think that may be because we acquired that since 2010, perhaps? It was around that time?
It was around that time.
Around that time. So it's not listed here?
Yeah, it's in pretty good shape, too.
Okay.
But the... And it, it's not as impactful downstream as the other dams that have, that we're working with now.
Okay. What would be, what we're considering later tonight is discussions on impacts related to cadmium in the silt around the reservoir and around that dam. So if we had to maintain that dam, update it or something like that, water draw down or working on the culverts beneath it, I would assume that that process would be inside this new 2020.
Actually, it's ongoing. We do maintain the water levels up there. When, like in the winter, we drop the boards down a little bit and then when we get heavy rains, we'll drop down and then restore after. The DPW does that.
Okay.
That's just a service, though.
But I do think, Jim, that if it's now in town control, it would be in the updated plan.
I think that was my question.
And part of our inventory, I believe. Whether it would recommend anything, it would depend obviously on demand, but I do think it would, it would now be on the inventory.
A lot of this is based on the hazard and our, our most hazardous dam is Carpenter Pond.
But that, Jim, does bring up a great point, especially with us talking about Napontet River a little later on in this agenda. And as part of that mitigation plan, potentially the cadmium that's in the Napontet Reservoir. I guess that would have to be a part of any plan going forward, not even including what we plan on doing a little later on today and over the next couple of weeks. I guess that would have to be a part of that.
Yeah, certainly, look at that as an extra hazard to that.
So you need from us?
A vote to accept the grant?
Any other questions? Sorry.
Sorry, just one last one. Going through this whole 2010, I didn't see anything about updates or is this good for five years? And I know when this came about, I remember the storms and all the apprehension about dams and that was kind of the catalyst for a lot of this stuff. So the shelf life of something is probably only good until something else comes along that is worse or...
Probably, but I'd like to think that we've learned a little bit more in the past 10 years, so. But yeah, I don't know, I didn't see a duration of how long it would be valid. Probably, yeah, until they tell us it isn't, but...
But maybe if the professionals that are working on this would make a recommendation to put it in the narration that says in 2020...
Yep.
This projects over the next eight years or 10 years or something? Because I'll be honest with you, unless you came back with the grant to do another one, this thing would have been sitting until something else bad happened and someone would have said, oh, what happened to the 2010?
And I think you're right. And I think if somebody tried to go for a FEMA grant at some point in the future and they came back, because that is one of the things in the preamble, I think in 2010, you'll see, I think that's when you really would have realized, oh, we need to update it. So instead of waiting to that point where we could have got a FEMA grant or any type of grant and they go, no, you don't, you don't have an updated, you're not eligible. Because like Paige said, you know, they, they have only so much money. So those who do the work to, to get this plan in are going, the ones who are going to be successful in getting the grants, they're going to weed out the other communities that aren't doing this. And I think just moving forward, it's just as good to keep on top of it. So it'd be eight years. So we're, we're looking at eight or 10 years after the fact, the 2010.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Move to accept grant from $14,625 for update on hazard mitigation plan.
Hold those in favor. Oppose? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Roger, you could stay there.
I will.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Buck. Thanks, Paige.
Bye, thank you.
Alrighty.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
All right. So several years ago now, it doesn't seem that long ago, we entered into an agreement to purchase the unused capacity of Cannon Forge when we were doing the original IMA sewer plans. The unused capacity came about because in the, in the intermunicipal agreement that we went after to do the IMA, we put language in that said that when we signed the IMA, all of the unused capacity, the unused Title V capacity in the system from Foxborough would revert to the town of Foxborough. So Cannon Forge was built at a lower density than it was approved for. They had purchased many hundreds of, a couple of hundred thousand gallons up there for sewer. They didn't use it all. And so we want, we want to purchase back 60,000 gallons of their unused capacity. We get to purchase it at a contract rate of $5.07 a gallon and we get to sell it at $43.21 a gallon. So it makes sense to do the deal. A fairly, fairly big portion of the development is in the town of Sharon. When we do the deal, we're going to take over the maintenance of the system. The system's in really good shape because it was done in the mid to late 80s, so it's all SDR 35 pipe and good sound lift stations. And we've done a I and I on it and all the, all the repairs are done. So when we take it over, we don't have a lot of work to do or a lot of money to put into it. But you have to monitor that stuff daily because what, right now, we're paying through one meter to, to the town of Mansfield for that whole system. And the more water that goes through, the more we have to pay. And we can't always assess that on rates because some of it may be infiltration or inflow. So we want to take over the system, we want to purchase the 60,000 gallons. But for the town of Foxborough to work in the town of Sharon, we need an intermunicipal agreement with Sharon. So my, our attorney, Stephen Medals, has worked with Sharon's attorney and the people up in Sharon and they've reached agreement on it, on an agreement. And all I need to do is get this approved and they're approving it tonight simultaneously with us and the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners highly recommends it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Couple of them, sorry. I, I remember a lot of the discussions of purchase, you know...
I think you're the only one that was around at that time.
There was a lot of discussions on price and availability of sewer. They didn't build up as much, so there's excess.
Right.
And there was also a lot of discussion of, do we want to make all this investment and help out a neighboring town in what development, future development?
This doesn't do that.
Yep. This is the first time I'm remembering that part of the purchase, or part of the acquisition of that gallonage, whether it's through reduced Title V flows or whatever numbers you call it.
That's what it is, yeah.
That we're actually taking over the maintenance.
Yes.
The lines.
Yes. The reason I feel we need to do that is they have a private contractor maintaining their sewer. We maintain the Foxborough portion of Cannon Forge. If I don't take it over, I'm going to have to figure out how to pay a private contractor to do it, and I don't think that's really good for us to get involved with.
Has there been any study on the existing, you say there?
Oh, yeah. I did an eye and eye of the whole system.
Of all of the system in Sharon?
Yes, the Sharon and Foxborough portions.
Cost benefit analysis of taking over 40 years from now, 50 years now, when Foxborough's dealing with broken pipes.
It's good pipe and good materials. Periodically, we'll have to replace pumps in the lift stations and do, you know, repairs. But no worse than what we do now for our own lift stations. It's very simple to do.
Would it be possible if all that work is done through the Water and Sewer Commission?
Well, it's already been done, not by us.
But if, not the physical work, but the analysis of how many miles of pipe or hundreds of feet of pipe, what pumps, what the duration of the pumps are, when they have to be replaced. So we're not buying into something that's going to cost X amount of dollars for a small benefit that we're paying later?
Well, it's a bargain. There's four.
I'm not disagreeing, but.
There's four.
Anything in here that says it's a bargain?
There's four lift stations.
Yep.
And all the rest of it's gravity. All the gravity pipes are SDR 35 PVC. They're all great. The seals are good. The boots on the manholes are now all repaired, so there's very little infiltration into the system. And that's all, really, that's about all you have to worry about except replacing pumps on lift stations. Because we're not increasing any capacity up there. So the pumps, when they require work, usually you have.
These are dual pump lift stations?
And we can probably talk for hours on what's.
Yeah.
We could pull them out and fix them pretty cheap.
So.
Yeah.
I guess my point is to ask the selectmen or if I want to sign on to something, that it's a good idea because somebody looked at it, or is there anything in writing that you've looked at it, you've done the cammering, that they're in good shape? Does it cost how many pumps and what we're buying into? Because in my experience, to buy into something, you've got to be pretty confident that the investment is worth it.
I'm very confident in this one. I mean, we've looked at everything up there. We even.
Is it fair to ask the Water and Sewer Commission to put an executive summary or a report that says this is the asset?
I'd be happy to do that. I just want to get on with the purchase right now.
The purchase is predicated on buying into all of this.
It is.
The structure in the town of Sharon.
It is. That's the PNS agreement, yeah.
So let me just clarify for the board. The reason why this is before the board is because the only board that can actually enter into an intermunicipal agreement is the Board of Selectmen. So because it's become between two towns, the town of Foxborough and the town of Sharon, that requires both boards of selecting to enter this agreement. The same agreement is actually before the town of Sharon's Board of Selectmen as well to enter into. So as I understand the question that Jim has, he just wants, you just want some assurance, which Roger did provide a report to you about this particular thing. I don't know if you saw that.
Report of the infrastructure?
Yeah, a report concerning the backup of this particular issue tonight. Are you familiar with that? I don't know if there was an actual report of the infrastructure itself.
Yeah, you're talking about what's separate, what was in the board docs that we got?
Yeah, there was a report. It was sent, the revised report that you just sent.
Yeah, but that doesn't have numbers in it.
I see, okay.
But there is no numbers right now.
All right. So if the town of Sharon wants to, the selectmen in the town of Sharon want to sign off on the intermunicipal agreement, they're allowing users in Sharon to be, for the excess to be purchased, but they're also giving up the rights for all that infrastructure. The town of Foxborough is acquiring the obligation to maintain all of the infrastructure. If the Water and Sewer is comfortable with it, I'm sure they've signed off on it.
They have.
But you're asking the selectmen to sign off on something.
I'm asking you to approve the IMA, the intermunicipal agreement.
But part of the IMA that we're signing says in this paragraph that Foxborough Water and Sewer is going to take over all of that infrastructure in perpetuity.
Only the mains and the lift stations. That's all we take over.
Okay, so in 40 years from now, if the lift stations need to be replaced.
Right.
It's on our dime, where tomorrow, if it happens, it's not on.
But all that works on rates, not on the town. In other words, where enterprise.
We may get there, Roger. All I'm saying is if everything's in order and you've done the study of the pipes and the pumps, can I have that information?
Yeah, I'll give you the eye and eye that was done, and I can show you that all the repairs have been done. We didn't do them. They did them. Cannon Forge did them.
Which you've reviewed.
We've observed them.
You've reviewed all, every one of the repairs that were done.
Okay. So can the Water and Sewer Commission put something together that says this is what the town is acquiring for this deal? This is the.
Yeah, it was, it was in your package. It shows you the whole service area.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you saw the map.
Yeah.
It's a color.
That's what I'm getting at. I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the agreement that the two towns worked out.
But there's actually, there's more information.
Water and Sewer is an enterprise fund.
Exactly.
Doesn't.
And this is just sewer.
Right.
We have two separate enterprise funds.
So you're basically purchasing the gallonage for about $300 and some thousand dollars.
Exactly.
You're going to be, when you sell that capacity, it's going to be about $2,200,000.
Correct.
What do you anticipate your annual maintenance costs?
Probably in the $30,000 range total. And as long as we do the annual maintenance, which includes pump repairs and things like that, because we do it in our own system.
But those funds are coming out of the enterprise fund.
Exactly.
Enterprise fund from the rate.
Yeah, and we would use the same contractor that we have now to do that work. That's Weston and Sampson Sewer, yeah.
So just so I'm clear, what you're referencing is just a map, Bill, right? It's a map with.
There's a map in the actual agreement itself.
I can give, Jim, I can give you the eye and eye study if you want to see it, too.
You're making it sound like all this information's in here. There's one map that shows the town of Foxborough with the dividing line with Sharon and a couple parcels.
No, I was referring to, I was referring to the summary of what this is, this whole process is for tonight. There was a summary document as well that Roger put together.
Oh, yeah, at the beginning of it, yeah.
Yeah, right.
But again, my, well, my issue is, in order to purchase it, we've got to maintain what? Is, all I'm asking is if the Water and Sewer is comfortable about it, your commission.
Very.
Is there a report that you can give us?
I can ask them for a report, yeah.
That's, yeah. That's what I'm asking. Some backup. So again, in 10 years from now, when there's a different board and there's a different group, someone doesn't say, there's a $250,000 pump that only lasted 10 years? Who's responsible for this?
These aren't that big.
I don't know, Roger. That's what I'm saying. I have no idea what's in the ground.
So as I understand Jim's question, he's looking for what is it that we're buying? The specifics of what we're buying in terms of the system itself, number of pumps, the number of miles of pipe that we're actually going to maintain. When was it last maintained? And it was probably done recently, right? Because it was actually updated.
It's just been done.
Yeah, just recently. So.
Yeah.
And then to provide, I would say probably you'd want to know what's the estimated repair time or time that that is, would actually next be replaced or repaired over the course of the next several years. So is that possible to?
As a quick risk benefit scenario, what they're doing now, what the cost is that we, that they're maintaining it, and if we take it over, what's the cost and liability plus the added income from selling them? It's not a difficult thing, and I'm assuming the Water and Sewer did that to get to the point where you're coming in front of us.
I can get the numbers, yeah. I didn't anticipate having to do that because the decision to buy it is the decision of the Board of Water and Sewer Commission.
Yeah. So actually, so in fairness to Jim's point, I understand what you're asking for, but I guess that analysis is actually done by the Water and Sewer Commission. All the board, all this board is asked to do is enter into the, into the intermunicipal agreement.
Which allows them only to go in and maintain.
Go into the other town. So the authority that you're asking for, the details you're asking for was actually already done by the Water and Sewer Commission.
And that's out of our hands.
That's really not something, because ultimately, it's going to be under their watch when that gets repaired or replaced.
Cost is borne by the rate payers, not the tax.
Right.
Right.
I mean, it's a fair question. I understand Jim's point. I just.
But they're not as separate as you think because the signature on this intermunicipal agreement between the two towns is signed by who?
Signed by the.
Signed by the Board of Water and Sewer.
This board and.
Mike Stanton's signature is already on the document that I have.
So on item three, it says maintenance and repairs. Foxborough shall be responsible for any repair necessary. All I'm asking for, if we're going to sign this, that we're responsible for the repair, is it anticipated to be $10 or $1 million or what?
It's unknown, but it's minimal. It's not a big system, and it's very robust. The pumps do fail from time to time. They do in our lift stations, too. We have several lift stations that we deal with those things. It's just part of our enterprise. It comes out of rate revenue, and that's how we fund sewer. And the rates are flat right now. They have, I've done a rate, we're in the process of doing an updated rate study, and they show rates staying flat in sewer for a long time because of what we've sold.
So those potential repairs down the road, like you said, just to clarify, this is kind of newer to me. Don't come out of the taxpayers' dollars. It'll come out of the.
The rate payers' dollars.
Comes out of the enterprise, the rate payers. And we're adding in the rate payers now.
Unless you're on a well in a septic system, you're, it's a tax.
You're a rate payer, yeah.
It's a rate. It affects a lot of people.
People with septic systems don't pay sewer fees.
But the people that have sewer pay the sewer fees that this could impact, correct?
Yeah, the rate payers in sewer pay the rates. But the rates are flat. We've done the study. We have virtually flat rates from now until 10 years from now.
Can I ask you, Roger, through the chair, if you were to provide the information for Jim, is there a particular reason why this needs to be done tonight?
Um.
Or could it wait for two weeks?
We were trying, we were trying to get simultaneously approval, simultaneous approval from both boards and, not approval, but let's say oversight. That's really what we're asking for. And this is not a case that we voted to change the relationship at town meeting for, because I'm not asking to take new customers in the town of Sharon. Not at all.
I guess my question, though, Roger, is is this a time-sensitive issue in terms of having it done tonight versus two weeks?
It won't hurt at all.
Okay.
I'd just like to get on with it and get it done.
Understood. And I think, you know, that's a fair point, but I think when the board wants to review something, if they have additional questions, it's fair for them to ask the question, too, and to get information if they need it. But the question is.
I have to have a crystal ball to be able to project what the costs are.
Well, let's be clear about the question.
I don't think we're looking for actual costs.
Yeah, let's be clear about that.
What's, you know, we.
Our own costs run.
Expected useful life remaining useful.
Our costs run $30,000 a year for the systems that we have, and this add-on is about maybe a quarter of what we have now, except it's got four lift stations. We only have seven. So you can figure somewhere around 50% of what we have now. So it'll be $15,000 a year over and above what we pay now.
And that's for the entire system, Roger?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the problem is, or the issue is, that the number of customers that this serves is quite small compared to the number of customers that are in our system. But the system itself that we're buying is in a lot better condition than our system in Foxborough because it's new. It's fairly new. It's made with all PVC pipe and good pumps, the kind of things that last a while. But the impellers fail. They have to be replaced. I mean, that's what happens in pumps. So if you compare the two together, it's maybe $15,000 a year to maintain this system. And that's a good guess. It's about the best guess I can give you right now. And I'd have to give that back to you anyway, because I don't have actual numbers.
So I'm not trying to diminish Jim's question, but was those kind of reviews, the review of the whole system, was that done by the Water and Sewer Commission?
No, it was done by Beta.
All right, but Beta reported that back to.
Yeah.
So there is a report. Could that report be shared?
Yeah, multiple pages.
Is that what you're looking for?
In summary, that would have been helpful to look at. And I've been following this, and I went to town meeting, and I watched all the presentations. I don't remember discussing that we would own the infrastructure. We would certainly purchase the unused flow, but this is new to me, and I don't know how it got to this point under the radar. And I'm not saying anything was done wrong, but I think it's very reasonable to say if we're acquiring an asset, what is the asset?
I don't think it was under the radar, Jim. I think what we did is we did the eye and eye about a year and a half ago to see what was the cost of the system.
I'm not saying under the radar, like it was intentional, but it wasn't discussed at town meeting, and it wasn't, I don't think, discussed in front of this board until I saw this attachment come that said, in order for us to buy it, we need to own it. And in my experience, it's like giving up a road. It's private because the town doesn't have to plow it. It's a lot cheaper. When the owner wants to turn it over to the town, they sometimes have to do extraordinary measures to improve it, to get it to town standards. There's a gap here. That's all I'm saying, is if Beta did the report, and there's a report on the lift stations, the infrastructure.
Condition of the system.
I, I think it's reasonable to ask, what are we buying before we sign it?
So just to get back to your point, though, Jim, is I think the reason why the decision was made to acquire the system is that it's actually in our best interest to do that as a town, because then we own and control the entire system, irrespective of the fact it's located in Sharon. The reason we want to control that is because, as Roger correctly points out, that if the eye and eye does fail in certain sections, we're not relying on an outside company to do that work. We're going to do it ourselves and make sure it's being taken care of.
I'm not disagreeing, and we keep going back to the same thing. But if it's such a good deal and it's the right thing to do, and Beta says, just provide the report so we can, so I can look at it to say, I can hang my hat on it was the right thing to do.
Well, the report, the report identified the deficiencies at the time that it was done. They've all been mitigated. So when you read the report, you're going to see the deficiencies, and they're mostly just small leaks in the manholes and at the boots. That's where you get them.
And they were addressed to the eye and eye repairs.
And they've all been done. There were no lift station issues in that, discovered in the report.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll get the report.
Is that the pleasure of the board?
I'm sort of in a quandary. I'm comfortable voting and getting the report afterwards because to me, it seems like it was more a water sewer issue as an enterprise, and they did their due diligence at their meetings, doing what needed to be done. I sort of get the differentiation between that and our agreement with Sharon. So I'm comfortable with voting today, but I'd like to know what the rest of the board thinks.
So the board doesn't sign off on this. It's the town manager that signs off on it.
Well, the board has to authorize me to sign this.
It'll be authorized.
And then the, and.
It says approved and authorized by vote of the Foxborough Board of Selectmen.
It does.
On the page, so.
Right.
The form of the document is from our attorney, so.
Yeah, I think we can vote to approve it pending the.
Receive of the.
Receive of the Beta report.
So move to approve intermunicipal agreement with the town of Sharon for sewer maintenance in Sharon portion of Cannon Forge development pending the review, the.
Beta report.
The successful review, satisfactory review of the Beta report.
It's fine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Subject to the satisfactory review of the report.
Oppose? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Next up, settlement agreement with NPS.
Good evening.
This is Attorney Pat Castello, who's our town council.
Good evening, Tom.
You hear the term town council a few times, but Pat is the town council.
The town council. Nice to see you all.
So this is a settlement agreement that's been worked on for, what, three years, Pat? I think we've been working on this.
Three years.
About three years. Not necessarily because it was a negative thing, but it was, we had to do a lot of discussion, understanding of each other's positions on this. This was a situation involving where the board may recall that the Optum Lounge was actually occurred because there were some seats removed from the stadium about three years ago, and they created the new Optum Field Lounge, which is now in use and actually a very successful location within the stadium. The issue came down to, initially, there was a concern over the fact that the seats were removed and that could potentially impact the town's revenue scenario. But as we further learned through our research of the lease agreement, that removing seats is actually within the realm and authority of the stadium itself, and that is included in the agreement. However, what we got a little, what really was the crux of the issue was the fact that once they removed the stadium seats and replaced it with a new venue, they then charged an additional fee for anyone who wanted to go into that area during, so it was effectively a different, an additional ticket or different fee that could be charged in addition to your ticket. And that, and our position was that the town should be entitled to a portion of that revenue based on the terms of the existing agreement. So we spent some time working on that, and ultimately, in good faith and fairness to both parties and to the, particularly to the graph group in this case, they continued to pay the estimated revenues for this throughout the past three years. So the town is not out of any money in terms of that, and ultimately, we reached agreement on the terms of the settlement, if we will. So Pat, if you want to add to that, but I think that's really the crux of it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. The issue here is. The issue here is really the lease, as drafted and negotiated in 1999, 2000, doesn't address this particular situation where seats, seating areas within the stadium are removed and altered. As the board knows, the revenue stream that the town derives from the lease agreement is based on a ticket fee payment that NPS would make to the town based on the number of tickets that are sold for stadium seats. Back in 2000, I don't think it was on anyone's mind that a stadium such as this would be broken down, and certain areas where seats existed would be removed and replaced with other viewing areas. What happened in 2015 is we became aware of the fact that the Optum Club Lounge was being created, obviously because they needed permits to go in and make the alterations to the stadium. And NPS' initial position was that they were still only obligated to pay us based on a per-seat ticket fee. We disagreed with that. The premise underlying the lease was that this would be a 68,000-seat stadium, event stadium, and that we should be compensated based upon that anticipated capacity. As Bill noted, we don't dispute the fact that the clear terms of the lease leave it up to NPS as the tenant to alter or modify the configuration of the stadium as it deems necessary and appropriate for its own business purposes, quite frankly. What we try to achieve here is an equitable and fair resolution of the dispute whereby the town would consider, I'm sorry, continue to be compensated based upon the revenues that were being received by NPS for stadium events. And I think the agreement that we've negotiated over the last two and a half years, it's taken some time. There have been numerous ideas exchanged, numerous concepts floated, many meetings held, and I think the product that we have here now does achieve that fair and equitable resolution. In essence, any fee charger assessment that NPS collects from admittance to any area of the stadium that at one point in time contains seats, whether it's standing room, whether it's a lounge, whether it's an indoor/outdoor material area, if there were seats there at one point in time and they convert it to a non-seat area and charge an admission fee to enter, to watch events at the stadium, we will still receive a ticket fee based upon that admission charge. So in essence, the lease terms relative to the ticket fees that are payable to the town would apply not only to the existing seats at the stadium, but any other area of the stadium where seats are removed and an admission fee is charged by NPS. I think we have to assume that NPS is going to operate the stadium in its best financial interest. What we heard through these many meetings and negotiations that Bill, Randy, and I attended was that the model for large stadium events is changing somewhat due to demographic changes, and what they're trying to do is stay ahead of the curve by providing more amenities to patrons who enter the stadium, including these private club areas. To the extent that they're going to charge admission fees to these areas, we adamantly insisted that we're entitled to receive our proportionate share of that charge per the underlying lease agreement. They agreed. And what this agreement will provide is that not only with respect to the Optum Club Lounge, but any other area of Gillette Stadium that is converted from a seating area to a different type of event observation area, we will continue to receive the proportionate ticket charge based on the number of admission fees assessed. Accordingly, I think it is a fair and equitable agreement. As Bill noted, over the past few years while we were engaged in this dispute, NPS did continue to make payments to us based upon an initial sum that we stipulated during the first year of the dispute. And this will apply, as I noted, not only to the Optum Club Lounge, which is in existence now, but in the event that down the road they convert other areas of the stadium in a similar fashion, this arrangement would apply to those areas as well. So we're going to continue to maintain our stake, if you will, in any and all revenues, admission revenues received by NPS. So that being said, this agreement, should the board approve it, would implement this arrangement with respect to Optum and any other areas of the stadium that are converted, and the parties will mutually agree to waive any and all claims they had had relative to this dispute. It is not a change in the lease. It is merely a settlement agreement much like the one that the town executed back in 2006 with regard to the dispute over complimentary tickets that fills in a gap that isn't specifically addressed in the lease. So it's the prerogative of this board to either agree or not agree with this arrangement. But based on the negotiations we've been through, which have been arduous, which have been lengthy, we do believe, myself and I believe the town manager, agree this is a fair arrangement, and I would strongly recommend that you approve it.
Any questions?
Staying ahead of the curve, are there any other changes that have been discussed or anticipated in the near future that could be affected by this as well?
We work very closely with them on a lot of their proposed amendments, there are changes to the stadium and to the venues, and there aren't major changes being proposed at this time that I'm aware of. However, that can change. It can change from year to year. The latest change in the stadium area, of course, is the new Revolution Training Area, which was just announced yesterday, which is going to be a nice addition to that area for the Revolution. But that's really not involving the stadium itself. But with respect to what your question is, I don't know of any specific changes at this time.
How many seats were involved in the Optum?
Couple thousand seats.
Somewhere between 1,800 and 2,000, I recall.
And now this new agreement is for 800.
Right. It has the new capacity of the new facility, of the facility is around 800, I believe.
So the capacity that's allowed in the area for standing would likely be less than it would be if we were all seats.
Right.
Any questions?
I just know we've been going back and forth for quite a long time. It's good to see that we're covered for future removal and access fees, and it's good to finally get this behind us.
Question, you had mentioned that, so Randy, yourself, Bill, Chairman Mitchell's not here, but I'm assuming he was at these meetings as well?
Actually, the last one, I think, was Dave, was chairman of that. So this finally just got resolved recently. So I wasn't, there hasn't been a meeting in a while.
We haven't met in probably eight or nine months, actually.
So you were part of this at the end?
Yep.
Move to accept settlement agreement with NPS LLC.
Hold those in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. This is yours, yeah.
Alrighty. The Pontiff Revival and NRC update. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So back here again.
Yes.
The long and arduous 30-year process. But you got Bill's letter the other day. Did everybody get a chance to read that? Got, I just got one feedback. I guess maybe start by, what do you guys feel about that letter?
Well, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you. We appreciate all the time, because we have been here a bunch. I'm sure you can't miss us, because we haven't gone away. But so thank you to all of you. Thank you to Bill. We really appreciate all the time. I know Mr. Bodie from Conservation is here, and I know Board of Health has been involved, and who am I missing? I know I'm missing another one, too.
Board of Health, Conservation, Water and Sewer District, they're actually going to submit some comments, too.
Great, yeah. So there have just been so many people who have been involved, and we really appreciate all the time and the effort, you know, very much. And also, I want to say thank you to the 590 people who signed our petition thus far. So thank you very much, all the people who love the reservoir. And we are very happy this evening to be joined by Paul McManus, who is our LSP, which is Licensed Site Professional. So we are happy to have him at the table with us.
Thank you. So I also was provided a copy of the town manager's letter and do have a couple of comments, and it really relates, I think, to tone. And your town manager is very diplomatic, and I guess I would suggest that the board possibly consider somewhat of a harder line. And specifically by that, what I mean is that the MCP process, as you know, is regulations written by Mass DEP. Those regulations were written in response to Chapter 21E, statutory authority for those regulations. It says that any responsible party responsible for the release of oil or hazardous materials, in this case, that travels with the property, so it's the current owners out there, they are responsible, they are required to ensure that the end result of their process in the MCP is to show no significant risk to human health, safety, and welfare, and the environment. And I believe that the draft permanent solution statement, which is just what it sounds, it's their attempt to go and say, "We are done. This is it. Here's our documentation. We're done. Close the door, and we walk away." And if they walk away, then whatever is left, in this case primarily it's cadmium, excuse me, in the reservoir sediments, you folks all own. So the MCP requires, excuse me, requires that they demonstrate that no significant risk to those four categories. They have not, in my view, even really attempted to demonstrate. They've reached a conclusion that there's no significant risk to public welfare, but there is no analysis. There's hundreds of pages, probably thousands at this point, of data with respect to data analysis conclusions, scientific evaluation, that one can look at and go through piece by piece with respect to human health, with respect to risk to the environment, and one can agree or disagree with that assessment for those aspects. But the risk to public welfare is simply a conclusion that they reached. There is no analysis. They are required to reach an analysis. In my view, the cadmium that's in those sediments adversely affects the welfare of this town. But even if one does not accept that conclusion that I've reached, I think you have to look at what's been submitted and conclude that there is no analysis, that they've reached that. So my suggestion is that this board, in a letter to Mass DEP, say, "The MCP requires the responsible party to do this analysis, and the DEP, the DEP's mandate is to hold their feet to the fire and make sure that they do it." And so I think that that's really the approach that you should take. The couple issues raised in Mr. Keegan's letter are real, and they're tangible, and I think they're specifically worth mentioning the way he does. But again, I would just frame it a little differently, in that with respect to the drought issue, the issue is one of a reasonably foreseeable, and that's an MCP term, one needs to evaluate existing and reasonably foreseeable conditions. And Mr. Keegan makes the point that this is a reasonably foreseeable condition, we know because it happened. And with the vagaries of weather that we're seeing now, it's probably more likely to happen now than it was in the past. So that drought, what is the risk, I think primarily to human health, but in all aspects of this? What is the risk from such a scenario? It was not evaluated. It's reasonably foreseeable. It wasn't evaluated. That is a failing. That is a failing to adhere to the MCP process. With respects to the impacts to dredging, as I've said, in my view, that's an impact to the welfare of this town. I don't think there's anybody in the room who thinks that this town is better off with that residual cadmium that's still in those sediments. You're not better off than you would be without it. So the question is, are you less better off in a material way to actually affect the welfare of the town? I believe the answer to that is yes. But again, there has been no assessment. They're mandated to do the assessment. We can agree or disagree with the conclusion, but we don't have an assessment to dissect, to evaluate on a technical level. So that's my take on this. If you're probably aware, I submitted a draft letter earlier. I have an updated letter dated October 12th that I'm not sure the board has, but I go into some of this in more detail, and I'm happy to discuss whatever aspect of it you might want.
Yeah, so do I.
And we haven't spoken before, but I know you had come to the last meeting. The letter that we drafted, you know, the two pages, it was a soft and fuzzy-type thing. It talks to what we, you know, answer these questions, but I have to agree with you on the regulatory part and the oomph. It lacks a little bit, in saying this to the board. There's no reference whatsoever that we even have an LSP, Ecotec, that's involved in it in our letter. It might be attached somewhere, but it says--
We don't have an LSP. NRRC has an LSP, but we don't. Technically, we don't.
Well, I'm looking at Ecotec's letter, and it says, "On behalf of NRRC and the town, at the last meeting, we had talked about jointly working together." The fact that we're not even referencing, you didn't even go to the meeting that we had with DEP, we're not referencing that you exist in this. We're leaving it up to a nonprofit group to hire you. I think we'd have to take a stronger stand that this is our issue, side by side with NRRC with the years that you've done it. But you either work for the town or you don't work for the town as a licensed site professional.
Well, I think, if I may, the, I think the crux, I think the crux of the town's position really doesn't even require, doesn't even require the technical analysis, because I think the crux, again, is that there's a mandate to do certain work, there's a mandate to get to certain endpoints in a reasonable fashion, and I think the town, I think the town can readily, you know, with or without, with or without my work as backup, I think you can readily reach that conclusion.
Yes and no, but the Board of Selectmen and town, none of us are professionals in that, so we need to go in a direction where we need input.
Sure.
What I was simply, somewhere in the letter towards the end, my suggestion is to add, "Based on our licensed site professional's findings," if you want to change it to NRRC's professional's findings, I'm okay with that, "but based on someone's professional signings," because we have our October 10th report. I haven't seen your October 12th. "Contained in Ecotec's October 10th letter, we are taking the position that the conclusion of, quote, 'No significant risk to health, safety, public welfare, and the environment' exists under existing and reasonably foreseeable conditions,' end quote, is faulty for the reasons stated with Ecotec's report. And in addition, and I go on to talk about the, I'm not an LSP, but I am a professional in the wetlands regulation, and for the report to say, in so many words, 'We can't clean it up because it's in violation of the Wetlands Protection Bylaw,'" you touched on it, but it's, the regulatory constraints cited as reasons for not pursuing to approach background conditions is not valid. I've never seen someone say, "You can't clean it up because it's against the rules and regulations to clean it up." So if we're going to write a letter, I suggest we put some factual, not factual, some professional backup that is reached by the conclusion into our letter, because often what happens is the LSP's letter is in an addendum somewhere. If we've got the town management saying there's an issue, I think we need to say it upfront. They may not even get to your letter in the back. That's all I'm saying. I think we can do a better job referencing the efforts that we've done to get to this point with the LSP.
I think it's a great point, and I think that's why, you know, it was sent out to everybody as a draft, so that we're here today, you know, discussing the various aspects of it, you know, trying to come together with the most cohesive letter that we could-- of it, you know, trying to come together with the most cohesive letter that we could send them. And I think your input's outstanding. I think it's a great addition. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I think we've got to hammer home the fact that they didn't fully complete the MCP process, especially in the public welfare portion. And I think we have to be stern about that. I mean, I think I said at the last meeting, I mean, they've beaten the scientific data to death. They have not addressed the public welfare and it's, and it's a requirement in the MCP. So I think we have to address that sternly and point that out clearly in our letter.
No part of ownership here. This is strictly a draft. And so that's the reason why we're here. So I don't take any negative, negative feelings towards this at all. So I'm happy to do, take whatever comes out of this discussion tonight and redraft it accordingly.
And somewhere we've got to throw it by Kate, too.
Right.
I don't know if she's gotten a copy of this draft yet.
Yeah, she clearly has a lot of background, like outside of what she does now with past history. So I wanted to make sure that she's seen it, reviewed it, read it. Make it a little, she's got the lingo to make it a little tougher, I think.
Understood.
And just one other suggestion, I know I'm kind of saying both sides here, but if we're going to focus on the technical, could there be a paragraph in here or two of the personal side to the reservoir? We have kids on a fishing derby, we have a boat launch there, we have proposed canoe launches being proposed, we have ice fishing, we have the lane property that's opened it up. If you go every weekend, there's people hiking, fishing, walking, using it, swimming. Other than saying we reached out to our boards, no personal side that people can relate to on this reservoir. I think the pictures are great of it, showing someone walking across it in drought. I was surprised to see that. But the fact that not only we do it now, but it's in the next generation, it's probably going to be used a lot more than it is now if we're on the same rate.
Yeah, I've got, one thing I'd like to add on that, too. You know, we've got those pictures of the 1950s where there was a major drought, but almost seasonally, almost annually, the water levels in that reservoir dropped, you know, three or four feet. And you have six to eight, maybe 10 feet of shoreline that changes, where all of a sudden it's muds that you are exposing, you know, for the first six or eight feet till it gets to the water. And so it's not necessarily, you know, we don't have to have a catastrophic drought to have this exposure issue, because the sediment samples, whether they're, you know, 100 yards from shore or two yards from shore, have the same problems. So, you know, it, so it's, those pictures were extremes, that gets people's attention, but it's almost an annual thing where we have, like July, July water levels dropped a lot. August was one of the wettest ones on record, so everything came right back. But other years, you know, that's been sustained longer, so that July and August usually are, and then what was it, just two or three years ago, we had a really significant dry summer. And, you know, there was a lot of stuff during.
Two years ago when we're doing the lane property, we were going in there, it was mud from beginning to end across the shore, and we're pulling out car bumpers and tires, walking in the mud with no water on it.
Right.
And it wasn't, that was a year ago.
And it's people's dogs and their.
You know, I'm almost embarrassed because I was in it and I didn't even think of cadmium.
Yeah.
You know, that's in the upper areas.
Mm-hmm.
But I shouldn't have done it, but to the point, there was no fencing, there's no signs, there's no, and I knew better.
Yeah.
Evidently I didn't. But anyone that was walking by there could have gone in there with no idea of what's in the mud.
Right.
So, and that was last year.
And it's dogs running in, carrying, you know, mud feet back into the house and, you know, it's all that kind of stuff, too.
Bill brought up a great point. And what about the boats coming out of the, you know, they're churning up, you know, lower, you know, get stuck in the weeds, having to back up to undo the propeller and bring the boat out, you're cleaning your boat, and what's the effect of the cadmium that's dried in the mud on the back of the boat that got taken out of?
All right, those are all exposure pathways, really.
Yeah.
And there's an interesting, there's an interesting point to really strengthen that what you two gentlemen have just been saying is that, is that the so-called conceptual site model, which is there, the technical folks who, you know, who did all this work at Woodard and Curran, you know, their evaluation of what's really going on, it's labeled a conceptual site model. And the conceptual site model is that the sediment is accumulating out there an inch every three to five years. So Mr. DeVallis mentioned about future generations. Well, an inch every three to five years in a shallow body of water really, and all the uses that he described, really means that dredging will happen. That, you know, not only is it reasonably foreseeable, it's virtually certain that you will want to dredge. And the other part of that conceptual site model that's interesting is that the way the cadmium seasonally comes up and down in the water column, it stays, even as the sediment is accumulating, it stays in those superficial layers. The most, most of the cadmium stays in the surface layer, even as the surface is coming up. So, you know, it's, it's very real. You know, you talked about, you know, thinking in hindsight, should I have been in there? Well, you know, again, that's, that thinking, I would argue, is an impact to your public welfare. You're concerned. Your welfare, your welfare has been adversely affected.
And the other thing, I wasn't here for it, but, you know, the meeting with the DEP that you set up, Bill and Sam, was great, I think, reaching out to them. But I was told that they said, "Oh, the levels are so low that, you know, you're not going to have any problems." Well, they didn't tell you that background level is two parts per million. We have 135 now. It used to be 800. So yes, it's gone down. 800's much higher than 135, but it's a long ways away from two. And as long as it's not two, we have to take it to someplace that is, and we have to test it and we have to deal with it as a hazardous material. So it's, that's a real issue.
All right, to Rick's, to Rick's comment, just so you understand, I have a golf course dredging project, so much smaller scale than this, but organic sediments being dredged out of golf course ponds. What they will do with that dredge spoils, they'll take them out, they'll de-water them on site, and then they'll take that dried muck, they'll cut it with sand, and they'll use it for topsoil, because it's clean. The MCP has what's called an anti-degradation provision. And what that means is one cannot take contaminated material, which this clearly is, it's related to an MCP site, one cannot take that material and degrade another piece of property. So the far and away most cost-effective way to handle, to manage dredge spoils is to keep them on site. For organic muck like that, it can actually be converted. It's not a free process to still work, but clearly the least expensive option is to go and to build topsoil out of it and use it. In an ideal world, absent that cadmium, you could take that material out, de-water it, cut it with sand, and use it as topsoil on a ball field in town. You can't do that. Instead of being able to use it as a useful product, you have to go take it, put it in trucks, and bring it to the DEP. Talked about a landfill in Lakeville?
Freetown.
Freetown. And pay a tipping fee, much as you pay a tipping fee with your solid waste that gets collected at the curb. So, you know, if the, if paying the tipping fee is no more problematic as a means of getting rid of this material because it has the cadmium in it than the other scenario that I proposed, then my argument falls flat on its face. But again, there's no analysis.
Just one question. Rick, you mentioned that it was, you said 800 parts per million at one point. And what point was that, that measurement versus the 135? How long did it take for that to reach that, reach that timeframe?
In, I think it was 1999 that that number came out. We tested again in 2012 and it was 450 in the same area. And then two years later, it's at 135, which is pretty remarkable, you know, that's, that's a huge, huge change, which is not typical for metals.
So last, the last measurement was about 2014?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, so that's roughly a, about a 15-year span for go, to go from 800 to 135.
Right.
And obviously, we don't know what it is right now, but it'd be interesting to know what, how close that is to, I mean, it's clearly not a two. That very much is not a two, but.
Are you taking, you taking those measurements right at the surface of the spoils? Or are you going down 10 inches where it was? Because you've built.
They, what they did is, what all those have done is they're typically taking at least a two-foot deep core, and then they actually analyze them at multiple depths.
Okay.
And almost, not almost, every single core that they did in 2013 and 2014, and our work in 2012, showed that the highest, like 90% of the cadmium was in the top zero to three inches.
Consistently.
And not, there was no exception. There was not a core that the highest concentration wasn't in the top three inches. Now, whether every single one was 90% of it, I can't tell you. But every single one, the highest number was the top one. The other thing that has happened is there are some areas of the reservoir that have gone up in concentration, according to the 2014 data versus the 2012, 2019, 1999 data. There are some areas that have still, they're not, they're not huge numbers, but they've actually crept up. So it's not, everything has gone down, but the really hot area has gone down significantly.
But it's still, it's, it's still a concern. It's not, it's far from, it's far from a point where it would not affect the bottom line of a substantial dredging project.
So Jim, just to take, take off on that point, it sounds to me that what's missing right now is any analysis that would show how it could get to two over a period of time, or what actions could be taken to get it to two. Because there's no analysis, is what you're saying.
That's right, that's right. And no analysis even of the current condition.
Right.
And, you know, the effect on the current condition and the effect, and the effect going forward. If we were, you know, if we were almost at the level of no effect and reasonable analysis indicated that in a few years it might reach a point where it's no effect, you know, then maybe one could argue that that doesn't represent significant risk to public welfare. But we're, we're a giant step from that.
And just one last question was, the EPA supposedly changed those regulations recently, so what's the difference in the terms of the change of the regulations so that everybody understands that?
Well, the.
And the background analysis.
Well, it's the Mass DEP. I mean, their background, their background level, which I don't think has changed, is the two parts per million. And, you know, they have, they have reportable concentrations which are, which are higher, you know, if on a new, on a new site being evaluated. But we exceed even the reportable concentration for an industrial site. They have a residential scenario and then they have a less conservative industrial scenario where one is allowed to have higher levels before you trip into the MCP. We exceed both of those with the 135 and, you know, in the cove.
Thank you.
Do you, in the years that you've done this, have you ever seen another, you know, mill pond that's had a heavy metal put into it and how it's been mitigated? I mean, we're in our own little bubble here, but I was thinking the other day, you know, is there a comparison that somewhere else in the state that this similar problem happened and how that was mitigated?
The ones that I've seen are, as you described, mill ponds, much smaller, don't have the, don't have the recreational component, don't have the shallow area that one would be likely to dredge. I have seen, I have seen some, several projects over the years where someone contemplated dredging, someone contemplated a, even a dam removal project, you know, to restore natural stream flow, and the contaminated sediments have quashed that, have quashed that goal, just because of the concern about, you know, we really don't want to touch those sediments, because if we take them out of the bottom of the pond, now we have to manage and pay to get rid of them.
But I actually worked on a project for Wellesley College, and they, they had a paint manufacturing company that they acquired that was adjacent to their school, and that paint manufacturer had discharged off-spec paints and various things into the ponds that Wellesley College uses. And they did dredge and they did remove all those sediments. Part of the sediments that were not really bad, they actually got permits to create a landfill next to the pond, and then some of the materials that were very, very high in concentration were actually taken off-site and disposed of. But that was about a $30 million project to deal with that, but it was, a lot of really strange colors came out of the ground. But it was heavy, it was still, it was mostly metals. It was dominant issue there, so.
If I can, you know, not without putting you on the spot, what are your thoughts?
Well, the Conservation Commission obviously is following it very closely. However, we do not have the expertise on our board as you don't have on yours, so we've been relying on the NRC for their expertise. We're behind them 100%, but we do not have the individual expertise on our boards for scientific comments, put it that way.
Any other questions? Comments and thoughts? I think, I think this was a great session. I'll certainly go back to the drawing board a little bit with fine-tuning the letter. Maybe within the next few days, send it out again. Do we, we can potentially have one more meeting before the end date, correct?
Yes, that's right, the 30th.
30th?
Yeah.
Guys want to come back on the 30th? Maybe we can finalize.
You just miss us, don't you?
Yeah, we do. And the couple of times I come here in a month, too, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a suggestion here that perhaps, I think since you've been working on this project since day one, and perhaps one member from the committee.
Just to correct you, it's day one of my selectmanship, far from day one.
But you've been involved, yeah, that's right. So you've been, obviously, for a while. So, and one member from the NRC, RC as well is, and we can work on a letter that we can probably get closer to in terms of what the tone and the, and the technical information should be, and that we can present at that next meeting. So that way we'll be closer to a product that I think we can all closely agree to.
Perfect.
And do we want some of those pictures, like you said, or some of the events that we're doing now?
I think the paragraph is important.
Yeah, just talk about.
Jim, I think you're right about that, because it is a huge asset to the town. Jim, do you have any pictures of?
I know.
Am I cleaning up? Go back and look at it. Get some images of.
Your muddy boots that are disintegrating.
Well, I think I do, but I think one of the times I was out there, and you guys might know more about it, but you guys tested, or somebody, the Napontet River Coalition tests that.
Oh, do they test in crackpot ponds?
They were testing at the same time, and I remember it was a Saturday morning, he came out and he says, "I've never, I've never seen it this bad. It was stagnant and there was no flow." So whoever.
Is it the Napontet River watershed?
That's the guy. So they have logged information and documentation of their stuff. I don't know if you have, if you're privy to that, but that might be a good outreach. It's a good point. I'll go back and look at the pictures.
Didn't we just get a letter from them, too, expressing interest? What was her name?
I think Sheila had spoken with the head, right?
Oh, are you her? Oh, get on. Come on up. Are you part of the Napontet?
I'm Carrie Snyder, I'm the advocacy.
Carrie, I knew it began with a C-R-K. Carrie, come on up.
I don't really have anything to add. This is the expert panel, so.
But we hate to talk about you behind your back.
I actually don't have the information that you just referenced, but I'm happy to go back and check to see what, what the testing results were.
Okay. But just explain a little bit to everybody who you are and what you represent.
Sure. So I'm the advocacy director for the Napontet River Watershed Association. We are a conservation group. We've been working for the last 67 years to protect and clean up the Napontet River and all of their tributaries. And we are very interested in the Napontet reservoir. and all of their tributaries, and we are very interested in Napontet reservoir, and we fully support everything that you've been doing, and I'd love to talk to you after this. And so I'm here in my capacity to advocate. We do plan to submit a letter to the DEP prior to the, the deadline of November 2nd, because we do believe that Foxborough would be served better to have Schneider, you know, clean it up.
Could we get CCED on that letter?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Yeah. No, I'm happy to share anything we have that can help.
If I might add, Mr. Chairman, that the, the conceptual site model and, and some of the lowering of the concentrations in the sediment make it clear that the place where that cadmium went is down the river.
Right.
It doesn't break down, it's an element, it is, it cannot break down anymore, it can only move.
Do you have any, any data that shows further downstream where cadmium levels have, have increased?
Cadmium is not something that we test for during our monthly tests, but I will go back and see what we have historically.
We've, we've, they tested in Crack Rock Pond, and they went that far to North Street, and there was cadmium and heavy metals and the sediments in those ponds down there, too. That's not been part of our purview or our focus on this, but that, that testing has been done, and, and it stuffs down there, too.
Right. We certainly don't, don't want to see it continue to spread.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Yeah, so we'll do a little ad hoc committee get-together.
That way we can just get closer to what, what this, what we're trying to achieve, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I just want to re-enforce, we were very pleased with the letter. I mean, there was a lot of great material in that, and I think that it's a great starting off point, and I could show you all the emails that said, this is great.
No, it's fine. I appreciate, no, because this is, the purpose of that was to get a dialogue going. How far am I, am I close, am I not close? Trying to reflect the discussion that's going on from both sides. So, I just want to make sure I can emulate that.
Yeah, great. We'll do that. Thank you. And we'll, we'll be in touch, Kim.
Thank you so much.
Rich, maybe, Kim and Rich can meet with...
Yeah.
Sure. Definitely.
All right, great. Thank you. All right. Selectments update. Anybody?
You got a board meeting?
I represented the Board of Selectmen at the 175th anniversary of the Universalist Unitarian Church. Went to their, on Sunday, went to their service at 10:00, their potluck afterwards. It was a great, I mean, just to think that that building's been up there for 175 years. You know, I went to the 150th Memorial Hall one, to think this was already looking down at them for 25 years before Memorial Hall was built, and they had a great, it was a great morning. They're doing a time capsule, and most of their ceremony that day centered around their time capsule, and it was a, just a really great morning into afternoon, and they were very much appreciative that the town was involved. That's all I have.
I went to the J.C.'s Fair, which was pretty well-attended, and I actually ran into Kathy Brady there, who said that there was a little bit more damage to the sign. I know they came and talked about that.
Yeah, I was wondering what happened to the sign. I was just wondering what happened to it.
I don't know how much, I don't want to misquote or anything, just in my casual discussion with her, but it sounds like there was a little bit more rotten damage than they anticipated. They have a plan. It's still underway. I don't think, I think they were supposed to have it up before Sunday, but, you know, that didn't happen because of some of the more, more damage that they found.
I figured that was the case, that they found a lot more than they expected, so...
It's a big project, so thank you to them.
Yeah. That is, that's a great part. We appreciate their, their efforts on that. So, I just got an alert, the Red Sox were up eight to two in the, in the eighth inning. Good news. Good news. So, keep up the good work, guys.
And that was part of Selectments update?
Yeah, that's right. Selectments update, that's right. So, just a couple of things to, to point out. First of all, I did attend the, the open, the, the official groundbreaking for the new, new soccer facility up at Gillette, and it's located down in the back. I know if everybody's familiar with that. I didn't even know that field was down there in the back. It's actually quite, quite disguised. You wouldn't know it was down there, but actually that's the, the Revolution's Training Center. But they're actually going to build a nice 30,000-foot building back there. It will be a, a really state-of-the-art facility for their soccer team, and, and it's, it's actually quite good to see it, because actually it clearly establishes that their roots are going to be here as their headquarters. I don't know if that will be the case with the actual stadium. I, I think there's still quite a bit of talk about moving it to Boston, but, but certainly they, they will be headquartered here, right here in Foxborough, so it's great to see them now pulling their, putting their roots into the ground here. We're going to be starting budget discussions, preliminary budget discussions this week, more strategic discussions this week, and then the formal process will be starting in, in, in November. I did follow up with a meeting, we did set, establish a meeting with the moderator and, and Chairman Mitchell and my, and Chairman Sue Dring in Town Council, and Randy, myself, and Mike, and Mary Beth to sit and go over the, the various charter requirements and to have a full understanding of that, and we'll report back to them. That's going to be on the 22nd, so we'll report back after that meeting to let you all know what's going on with that. Other than that, that's where I'm at.
Just before you, Mary Beth, I apologize, just come, just the 175th anniversary. Did we sign a proclamation to that a couple of weeks ago? Could we get a proclamation we could sign?
It's an ongoing celebration for the next few weeks.
It is, for the next few weeks, and I think it, because I thought we had, but I think that would be a neat thing to add to their time capsule.
That's a great thought.
Before they close up their time capsule, so that would be great. Thank you.
So, I have a few items. First, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Val Green for her service to the town. She was our longtime building department, building inspections, administrative assistant, and way more than that. She was an amazing employee. We're going to miss her, but we wish her well in her retirement. Would also like to welcome her replacement, Lisa Barry, who started two weeks ago and is already hitting the ground running. She had a little overlap time with Val, and she's wonderful, so happy to do that. Also want to give some kudos to the team here on my left, Amanda and Mike, for our health fair that we ran for employees. It was the best attended. We did a survey, employees were pleased, gave out a record number of flu shots for employees, and it went very well. We also utilized our senior tax workers as greeters, and it went really well. Everybody had a good time. School Department does an amazing job of providing food, and it, it just was a really good opportunity for employees to collect, connect with wellness and health insurance topics. We are in the process of our ongoing code of conduct civility training. Jack Dolan completed two more training sessions today. We have well over 170 people trained right now, and we will continue to assess. We had planned to have cable tape the, I think, the October 11th one, but instead it was done today. I believe that we had a successful taping, so we will have a video of that. Future stuff we're working on, we are in the process of reviewing vendors for the Assessment Center for our fire chief to replace Roger Hatfield when he leaves in January. We're going to use a vendor to do an internal, an assessment with internal candidates. Hopefully that'll take place in November. We're reviewing those bids right now. We are in the, well along in the interview process now for the VSO. Some people don't know it yet, we'll be calling them for interviews, but we went from 65 candidates down to about six, so it's been a great process. Chris Mitchell is the, your board's representative on that interview team. We recruited Mark Craig, our Human Services Director, who's worked a lot of his career with veterans. He sat in on interviews. We're also going to have a member of the Veteran Services Committee on the team, so that's been going well. To free Mike up, and the transition continues. Do you have anything?
So, the one recruitment I want to report on is that we did hire the town's new IT business analyst. This is something that we've been looking at for quite some time, and, and we do believe that this is going to help to create efficiencies within the school and municipal side, both looking at processes, business-wise, as well as IT solutions across all departments. So, we've recently hired Sandra DeAndrede. She comes to us with 15 years of experience studying from the bottom up, everything from being a production support manager in IT, all the way up to senior supervisor, and we are very pleased she was, we had a strong field of candidates, and she stood out among them, and she has, she has accepted Bill's offer letter, and we're very happy. We'll bring her to, to meet the board when she starts. We anticipate her starting at the end of this month, and shortly after that, we'll, she'll come to meet the board.
Is this a new, new position, or a replacement, or combining?
This is the renaming of a prior position that had not been filled formally, so it was a, I forget the name of the position before, but it was, it was more focused previously in Town Hall, but it was looking at business processes and IT. Now it's crossed between the IT department in the schools and, and municipal departments. So, it's actually been a great collaboration, the interviews. I was involved in the final round of the interviews with our finance director, our IT director, myself, and I recruited our building commissioner to be on that as well, because that department will be looking to see if their inspection software is, is the best value for what they're getting, or should they be migrating to something new? So, so...
They're looking, I guess, is it a person that left?
Mm-hmm. It was a financial, financial analyst position. It was well over, almost two years it was vacant. We were negotiating, talking to the union about the revision of the position and the change in reporting structure and the change in it, so it took us a while to impact bargain it, and we advertised and did have a good success with that.
Thank you.
The, just the last thing we didn't, I didn't mention, but Mike and myself and Paige and Nick, Richard have been going, have been attending the, the Leadership Matters program. We're in our, we finished our second segment of that, so we go once a month for two days, Fridays, Friday and Saturday. So, we spend both full days in Cambridge attending those programs, and it is, it's a phenomenal program. I just, I can't speak more highly about it. It was something that we're both learning, all four of us are learning, some tremendous skill sets that we've, that really hasn't been taught to us at any level in municipal government, so we're really, really pleased. And we're there with about six or seven other communities from across the state and into Rhode Island. So, it's been a, it's been a tremendous learning experience for both of us, for all of us.
I can speak to that a little bit, because I think that, you know, for Foxborough to, to be attending that and to be selected to go to that, I think is a tribute to our, our community, and we'll be bringing great things back. And this is not just a learning experience for the four of us that are going, we're going as a team, so there are, there are school teams that have gone, headed up by superintendents, and municipal teams that have gone, are going, headed up by their town administrator, town managers. And our charge after we finish the coursework in January will be to take on a one-year municipal, in our case, municipal, in some cases, school project that will benefit the town, and to transfer the skills that we're learning and the tools that we're gaining across our town departments, and we'll be sharing what we're learning.
All set?
That's it.
Super. All the action items?
Yeah, it's been a long time since the action items were at the end. Almost forgot about them. All right. Move to approve public event application for Halloween parade and trick-or-treating on October 27th, 2018, from 2:30 p.m. until 4:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor? Post.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from September 11th, 2018.
Second.
All those approved?
And last, move to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from September 18th, 2018.
I will second and recuse myself, because I wasn't there. Five-minute meeting you had.
All those proved? All right. Last one.
All right. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those proved? Great. Thank you. Good night, everybody.